I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Salamaga City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Onanda Waka, the people of the Great Hill, the Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaga School District now stands and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaga City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are four changes since the agenda was originally posted. We changed the resignation date of Ina Sadler, one of our after-school late-run bus drivers, from 11/4/22 to 11/17/22. We changed the title on Jennifer Hawkins from step coordinator to step project advisor. We corrected the name spelling of Joseph Andor, who is one of our substitute service helpers. And we exchanged a PowerPoint presentation to a PDF version to ensure that it can be read across very well.
Then I need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Dale, second by Brad. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. I should mention that Mrs. Breeze is excused absent. So we can move on to our ribbon cutting?
Yes, you recall we had a opportunity to receive a book vending machine that was donated to us. We are now, we're actually going to take a look at the book vending machines. We're on a field trip over to Seneca Intermediate School and we have a ribbon cutting with a large pair of fancy scissors. There we go. So if we'd all like to wander over to Seneca Intermediate, we can take a look at the vending machine in operation and see an actual ribbon cutting. Everyone is invited to join us or you can stay here. You bringing a livestream really, Mike?
What's up, Bella? She all right?
Huh?
She all right?
Ooh.
She's a little shook around there.
Oh, I don't know.
Settle, right?
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Sit up.
Do you have any words you'd like to say?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I really appreciate the opportunity to donate that money for this machine because I know it's going to be used in the best possible way for all the kids in our community. And I know that it makes a big difference to Marsha Fisher, who is now passed away, but I'm sure she's watching it. And we exchange books all the time. She's an avid reader and I know that she would really appreciate them. So in her name, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Jackson's not allowed to play with scissors, so.
Cool, thanks. Do you guys want to, do you guys want to get together with Mara and the student, I guess? We can do a quick picture? Woo-hoo! Good job! Oh, yeah, just because it's, the 27th is listed as the midterm grade because really each grading period has to have their own separate, so the midterm, I just did like a Friday/Saturday. But if you change them, it'll, it'll take all this stuff out.
I have, we got a bunch of pictures from some of the kids for the turkey tribal. If I send you the results, it might just...
Yeah, text me the pictures and then if you'd like to send an email, let's take the results.
Michelle says you've got access to it in the journals.
Okay, oh, yeah, yes.
Because we did top five.
Okay, all right. Yeah, no problem. Yep.
Next, we need to move to executive session for the purpose of personnel, so I need a motion.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ted, second by Flip. Favor?
Aye.
I oppose, abstain, motion carried.
Right, we should not, we're going to do the live.
Well, the clicker doesn't work with a PDF.
Yeah. But we'll make it magic.
We'll scroll.
Okay, so you guys, you're going to all ready.
Are you rolling?
Telling you. Presentations are five minutes max. The girls over five, we're learning to start doing these. True.
How's five and scrolling?
One, three, five.
I just picked up some beef sticks.
What? Where those from?
Jesse Murray was doing a fundraiser.
So I'm not making fun of your hair, but last week it looked short and this week it looks long.
Need a shit beard again?
I got special formula. Actually, I got a wig for my birthday, but he took it.
He did.
I did shave it, yeah.
It was back.
I had the handlebar.
It was back in like two weeks. Assistant Principal Grayson.
I wish I had a wig.
Goodness gracious. I'm feeling intimidated right now.
I'm not trying to, I'm just astonished.
The board just went into executive session.
I don't think I'm...
I, you know, I, at least to the side of the full mola.
The what? I did a mola last year, the last year or the year before. I was trying to take it. That's right.
We are muted.
You're not hitting in the car.
You're right.
Similarities between our scores and their scores, like where we're lower, where we're comparable.
Yeah, we can't actually compare it to another school. We tend to compare it to the national average based on the data from 2015 that was more than 2020.
So anything forty percent title above is your average, above average, and anything below that would be considered low average, below average. So it's nationwide that we're looking at. So it's not could you ask your question again?
As we get into the state assessments, we're able to better compare those.
Okay, that's basically, yeah, so I was basically, we were looking for Cataralas County. For any of the schools that use this, and then was there a way to compare and just say, are our kids comparable where they are? Are we below? Are we above? You know, just how do we, how do we rate? I, that's all I did. Cause I get where you're using this data that is pre-pandemic. So of course we should be looking at more red because we don't want to.
Right.
But I understand that. Whereas just wondering if other districts around our area are seeing the same similarities.
Yes. And actually, if you look at NWA reporting post pandemic, they've done a lot of studies on how kids are moving at a much slower rate, and that's nationally. So while we might not be able to compare, you know, us to the region nationally, we're all going to be much slower.
What the red would be considered like tier three, the last thing? So, so the red, the red would be considered pretty much much below, where it would be a grade level. As you get to the orange and you start moving to orange and yellow, that's, that's more the average. And then as you get up to the greens, it moves, that's above average.
And this is, it's a broad scale too. So when you click into an individual student, they have an overall RIT score, which is the measurement that they use for this testing. But then it breaks down into different instructional areas. So a student might be red in vocabulary, but they might be green in informational text. So we really can identify specific targeted areas for each kid. And that's really the purpose of this is although it's alarming and the, the red and the orange is not alarming, it's what we're, what we're using, how we're using the data and what we're going with it and our response to it.
In this test, how often you
Three times a year.
Three times a year? So then you can, you can basically bring it back and say, okay, this is where we made the areas of improvement.
Yes. And the next step would be looking at growth setting. So this is where they are right now. So working with the kiddos. This is where you are expecting to grow for the winter. And so the kids really have a part in that. And then when they do the assessment in the winter, and then we look at, do they meet their growth? Do they not? Why didn't they meet their growth? So there's a lot of information that comes from these reports.
I know I've had this conversation before. And I know as a parent, how much I wouldn't want to hear it, but at what point when we're looking at these tests, do we approach a parent and say, would it be better told your son or daughter back reading? Because I know I've had a childhood struggle and watched them struggle. And I wish somebody would have approached me and said, hey, it would have been better to have them repeat a grade at an earlier age where they don't struggle as much. And I'm not saying that's an easy conversation to have by any sense, but you know, it's better than having the kids struggle their whole school year too. So and I think we have to adjust that tonight. I'm just throwing that out there.
I think it's a delicate balance. I'm missing one data point. Typically, we want to look at before we make those decisions, multiple data points.
And so typically, or you would want to hold a student back, maybe a process.
Right, right.
So we, we wouldn't just look at NWA and say, we need to have conversations in the back. There'd be multiple data points. And I would be safe to bet that it would be in a tier three intervention. And that's where the MTFS process would come in. And the parent involvement, and it would be a holistic conversation with teachers and interventionists and the parents and adults. I think those conversations happen.
Right.
It's just
a hundred percent of the kids that are in that tier three getting tier three support. And the red, not for my, not, not for the high school.
Not necessarily. Again, this is another single cut point. So what they do is they look at this, probably how they did on the state assessment data, how they do on their classroom benchmarks. They look at all of that information. And then they find kiddos that aren't, that are underperforming in several of those areas. And then those would be the kids that are receiving tier three interventions.
And they might have qualified for tier two instead of the tier three. It's kind of, it's, I just don't know.
Yeah. All of the students in red and orange are receiving some sort of support in the classroom. That doesn't necessarily mean that they've been identified as a tier three and that they're, you know, working specifically with an interventionist. But they are receiving supports and we're really drilling down, making sure that we're giving them what they need to be successful.
So, all right. So we're into the high school math. We actually, we must have skipped through the reading at some point. No, that's okay. I mean, but yeah, it's a scroll, scroll back. Sorry. So for, for the reading, this is for the eighth, ninth and 10th grade. I, I think we've made a little bit of a shift. It seems to be a little bit better, but we still are, you know, fifteen some percent where we want them to be. As we move on to the math, we actually give two different math tests. We give the, the math, which is a six through 12 test. That's this one here. And we give it to our eighth and ninth graders. Our eighth graders seem to be performing a little bit better than, than what our ninth graders are on that test. But the ninth graders in this group are the ones that are, we've already identified as struggling. They're typically in our algebra one A class. So they've taken two years of algebra as a ninth grader. Whereas the ones in eighth grade was, was everybody in eighth grade. As we scroll on, this is the algebra test. And as you can see, we have ninth grade, quite a few of the kids are being successful in the algebra as ninth graders. But that's, that was a select few. That was the ones that read in algebra. One, yeah, they would be the ones that are in algebra one. Our 10th graders would be the ones that are in algebra one, the second year of it. What I will say is that we had students in eighth, in ninth grade that did test well on the six through 12 math test. We retested them on the algebra test and they qualified to move from algebra one A to algebra one. So we made some adjustments already this school year and promoted some kids in that first year. The reason why that's important, obviously, as they move through their high school career, we get them through algebra in, in, in one year. They're more likely that they'll be able to win an advanced destination at home by, by getting up to that level too. Whereas just wondering if other districts around our area are seeing the same similarities.
Yes, and actually if you look at NWA reporting post pandemic, they've done a lot of studies on how kids are moving at a much slower rate, and that's nationally. So while we might not be able to compare, you know, us to, you know, the region nationally, we're all moving much slower at a much lower rate.
What the red would be considered, like tier three, the last thing?
Yeah.
So, so the red, the red would be considered pretty much much below, where they would be at grade level. As you get to the orange and you start moving the orange and yellow, that's, that's more the average. And then as you get up to the greens, it proves that's above average.
And this is, it's a broad scale too. So when you click into an individual student, they have an overall RIT score, which is the measurement that they use for this testing. But then it breaks down into different instructional areas. So a student might be red in vocabulary, but they might be green in informational text. So we really can identify specific targeted areas for each kid. And that's really the purpose of this is although it's alarming and the, the red and the orange is not alarming, it's what we're, what we're using, how we're using the data and what we're going with it and our response to it.
In this test, how often you?
Three times a year.
Three times a year? So then you can, you can basically bring it back and say, okay, this is where we may be areas of improvement.
Yes, and the next step would be looking at growth setting. So this is where they are right now. So working with the kiddos, this is where you are expecting to grow for the winter. And so the kids really have a part in that. And then when they do the assessment in the winter, and then we look at, do they meet their growth? Did they not? Why didn't they meet their growth? So there's a lot of information that comes from these reports.
I know I've had this conversation before. And I know as a parent, how much I wouldn't want to hear it. But at what point, when we're looking at these tests, do we approach a parent and say, would it be better told your son or daughter back grade? Because I know I've had a childhood struggle and watched them struggle. And I wish somebody would have approached me and said, hey, it would have been better to have them repeat a grade at an earlier age where they don't struggle as much. And I'm not saying that's an easy conversation to have by any sense. But you know, it's better than having the kids struggle their whole school year too. So I'm not saying we have to adjust that tonight, I'm just throwing that out there.
I think it's a delicate balance. I'm missing one data point. Typically, we want to look at, before we make those decisions, multiple data points.
And so typically, or you would want to hold a student back, maybe a process.
Right, right.
So we, we wouldn't just look at NWA and say, we need to have conversations on them in the back. There'd be multiple data points. And I would be safe to bet that it would be in a tier three intervention. And that's where the MTFS process would come in and the parent involvement. And it would be a holistic conversation with teachers and interventionists and the parents. And I don't think, I think those conversations happen.
Right.
It's just.
A hundred percent of the kids that are in that tier three are getting tier three support. And the red, not for mine, not, not for the high school.
Not necessarily. Again, this is another single cut point. So what they do is they look at this, probably how they did on the state assessment data, how they do on their classroom benchmarks. They look at all of that information. And then they find kiddos that aren't, that are underperforming in several of those areas. And then those would be the kids that are receiving tier three intervention.
And they might have qualified for tier two instead of the tier three. It's kind of, it's, I just don't know.
Yeah, all of the students in red and orange are receiving some sort of support in the classroom. That doesn't necessarily mean that they've been identified as a tier three and that they're, you know, working specifically with an interventionist. But they are receiving supports and we're really drilling down, making sure that we're giving them what they need to be successful.
So, all right, so we're into the high school math. We actually, we must have skipped through the reading at some point. No, that's okay. I mean, but yeah, it's a scroll, scroll back. Sorry. So for, for the reading, this is for the eighth, ninth and tenth grade. I, I think we've made a little bit of a shift. It seems to be a little bit better, but we still are, you know, fifty some percent enjoying what we want them to be.
Thank you.
As we move on to the math, we actually give two different math tests. We give the, the math, which is a six through twelve test. That's this one here. And we give it to our eighth and ninth graders. Our eighth graders seem to be performing a little bit better than, than what our ninth graders are on that test. But the ninth graders in this group are the ones that are, we've already identified as struggling. They're typically in our algebra one A class. So they've taken two years of algebra as a ninth grader. Whereas the ones in eighth grade was, was everybody in eighth grade. As we scroll on, this is the algebra test. And as you can see, we have ninth grade, quite a few of the kids are being successful in the algebra as ninth graders. But that's, that was a select few. That was the ones that read in algebra one, yeah, they would be the ones that are in algebra one. Our tenth graders would be the ones that are in algebra one, the second year of it. What I will say is that we had students in eighth, in ninth grade that did test well on the six through twelve math test. We retested them on the algebra test and they qualified to move from algebra one A to algebra one. So we made some adjustments already this school year and promoted some kids in that first year. The reason why that's important, obviously, as they move through their high school career, we get them through algebra in, in, in one year. They're more likely that they'll be able to win an advanced destination at Paul by, by getting up to that algebra two.
So what this graph and the graph which you see on the next side represent is the correlation between the NWA assessment and the New York State assessment that the students take. So this is a snapshot of our students last year, their performance. So from their winter NWA assessment to the spring New York State assessment, this graph shows the projected proficiency and how many students actually received what NWA predicted for them to receive. So this shows the validity of the linkage between those two things. So this, this green picture represents the number of students, fifty nine percent of the students perform what NWA projected to them, for them to perform on the state assessment. And then the blues, the light blue is one level higher and the darker blue is two levels higher. So this shows that last year, we really started this work of identifying where kids are projecting to perform and then providing those interventions that, you know, over thirty percent performed actually higher than what we were expecting them to. So this is a really valuable tool that we have that, just based off of our data that we have in the fall, we already can kind of have a snapshot into the future of what we expect students to receive. That way we can really start putting interventions in place, we can make instructional decisions. Our grade levels are when we're planning, they're looking at trends in the data. They are really deciding as a team, how they're going to approach specific standards that we can move students, for those that are being projected to receive a one, we can hopefully make them move towards two or three on New York State assessment. Reading, and then this is math. So again, sixty one point five percent of our students faced from winter to the spring New York State assessment received what NWA projected for them to receive. And then thirty three percent actually performed higher than what we projected for them to receive. So the work's already there and we're just going to only make it better from now on. Okay, the next couple of slides are the state assessment data for grades three through eight in ELA math and the region's exams that were released to us. And so what we've been able to do with this data is really study the gaps between our students and the region. So that's more specific tools around us, but also celebrate our areas of success with our students because in some areas we did really well. And so we've used this information to really drill down into specific questions and standards and where we're, we really see that we can help students with targeted instruction. I mean, you can look up to the graph, Marcy, we're just kind of scrolling through them slowly. I'm not going to talk about them each specifically, but this is, we did third grade, sixth grade and eighth grade as snapshots. So this is third grade ELA. The blue represents Salamanca and the orange represents the region. What you see on the bottom are the questions that correlate standards that were released on the state assessments. And then up the side is the percent of points earned. So the dips are pretty consistent with the region. An example of how we used some of this information. So we went to our big four meetings, each grade level. And the coaches provided the teachers with their students that they had last year. So their students from last year's data. So they were able to really look at that information and see how their students performed last year and make some decisions about, was it an instructional, was it a student, you know, comprehension issue, something like that? But then they also were able to look at, so fourth grade teachers looked at how students in third grade performed last year so that we can make educational and instructional decisions on how to meet their needs if there was some, you know, deficits in some of the standards or some of the questions. We've also put in place some interventions and small group support to help close any gaps that we may have noticed from the previous year. And then along with the state assessment data, we've taken the information that we got from the NWA. And we've kind of put it all together at these big four meetings and really identified what are our priority standards going to be as we move forward and how are we really going to target to show improvements? Overall, with the snapshots of grades three, six and eight ELA and math, we know that we have improvements that we need to make. So as a team, we've been working really hard to try to align our curriculum, provide really rigorous instruction for our students, improve our assessments and build stamina with our students and use our universal screener, which is the NWA to better identify what our students' needs are. So that as we work through the small group instruction, that we're really providing targeted specifically to their needs and, and really using the MTFS process that we talked about last week. And then I just wanted to acknowledge that even though like some of this may be alarming data, I really think that we have to acknowledge that our students have been through a lot in the last two years. And we're really seeing some gains and we're a lot, you know, this year is high expectations and we're really focused. And I, I think we're going to see some really big improvements in the future.
Yes, I'm moving to preschools and so, and Marcy, you kind of scroll slowly like you did with, thank you for this. But these, these next few slides are just a snapshot of the region's exams. And the trend seems to remain consistent and reflective of the region. We need to understand the students that have not passed the ELA, Algebra Living Environment Global and US History, exams continue to take those exams until they've earned the region's credit. Those are graduation requirements for the most part. Currently, our graduation rate has still been pretty good. We haven't seen much of a dip. As of right now, students that pass the course because of the pandemic, they're still being grandfathered in. If they receive a fifty one to a sixty four, they still earn that region's credit. So we continue to, we'll have another set of test giving here in, in January to try and get some of our ELA students and some of our other students that have not qualified yet to get through that. Also understand, I guess, I want to point out that if, if we're looking at the snapshots here, it's, it's pretty accurate. And the region itself ranges anywhere from thirty to forty thousand students is, is what's polled in these graphs. And then as part of our school, we're only looking at somewhere between whatever seventy and a hundred students for each of the different grade levels taking each of the different tests. So very consistent. I sent out to our staff, the, the region's teachers and the eighth grade team, this information to make sure that they are aware of what standards, what questions our students are struggling with for the most part. And then we will start looking at some of the different interventions through our Center for All to try and help support our students in the growth.
So and just to bring it back to summarize, because we've mentioned a lot of these pieces and some of these. So last year, we talked a lot about responding to the finiment gap and a lot of those foundational literacy skills. So just bringing that back in as to how we're being very mindful of the implications of the pandemic on those skills for our youngest learners that are now in second and third grade, even fourth grade, that may not have received that direct instruction in person. So we're responding to that. So just to bring that back around, we also have some items for our second and third grade teachers in fourth grade, so bridging that finiment gap and tying that into integrity. We also, again, just to mention, so the benchmarking, we do have the three times a year, putting that as a part of the data, a part of the, the information about the bull child on the table. And then our big four meetings, so our teachers are meeting three times a year and as a grade level with coaches and having these conversations, putting a lot of these different pieces in front of them. So we're not just making these subjective decisions for kids. We're really grounding it in evidence and data to make the best informed decisions that we can. And also identifying from that state assessment data, what are those priority standards? We've also tied that into some curriculum work. So as they look at the updated math curriculum, you know, not only learning about the curriculum, but also identifying those priority standards and making sure that we're being mindful of what the, the data has told us up to this point. Ongoing grade level meetings, we have those on a regular basis where we're trying to talk about all kids and have these various levels of data conversations, pulling all these pieces in. MTSS process, so again, bringing a lot of this information in, we have a lot of structures in place. So this is the silver lining as well, that we have a lot of things in the works and we continue to refine these pieces and work with, with staff and just to improve our, our processes and do the best that we can for kids. I want to steal your time. Okay, so we also have power hour starting. So that is the week of the twenty eighth. So again, really making informed decisions, working with families. And then again, providing those targeted supports for kids. So that is another option and just continuing to grow that programming and be responsive to needs and also mindful of what students have been through and, and how much they can take. So just. Thank you.
Thank you. So then give them their presentation.
So where we're going to go with this is in January, I know they, they show graphs of a grade level in general. We actually have the RIT score for every child in every single grade. The Lexile level is their, their current reading level. And then whatever they're doing in guided reading is level. So we have the three measures as starting points for the fall. And we will be tracking their growth and be doing this presentation again, probably in February, solely right now. So you can see the progression of growth by grade level. And then we know each student's growth will ascend.
Can you explain what RIT score is again?
Yes, the RIT score, I mean, Erin, I don't know if you want to explain it better. But a RIT score isn't a grade level equipment score. A RIT score is how a child compares to other students of similar demographics at nationally. It's like a mean score.
Yeah, it's just their measurement tool. It's just the stand of the RASH, RASH even something, but I don't really even know what that means. But it's just their, their measurement. But that's exactly what you said. The, the value of shows the proficiency and breadth.
So you're going to be working on improvements that gets us towards the end of the school year. So we're going to see charts that are updated then. So what I'm looking at is like, I see through the element here, some of them are pretty similar to what we're doing in the region. But the one that jumps out maybe is high school algebra one. I'm seeing gaps on your row twenty, twenty-five percentage points, ten, fifteen percentage points. So what, explain that difference real quick.
New York State assessment data or NWA?
The region's data.
Yeah, the regions.
Yeah. I mean, what I, I can see very well on it last year.
So we want to look at assessment.
Yeah, we have a new teacher in that position. We are offering through EDA, our standard day system program. We do classes actually in all the region's exams, including the algebra to try and help again, make sure that those students end up making sure that they pass the region's exam for graduation.
They're looking at the assessment for our school year and make sure that they're, show what they're actually going to be assessed on.
So, yeah, and so the teacher also has, like I said, I sent those out to the teacher. So they see, even though the teacher wasn't in that position last year, they see where the gaps was and what standards we did not perform well on.
So then you said a lot of the kids will be retaking this algebra regents in January.
Correct.
So then we'll compare the year we were to twenty one, twenty-two versus January. Then now we're going up or down?
Improving.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm seeing, I mean, the, the big, the big talent of the year are the passing regions. I mean.
Right. I look forward to February to see what improvements we made. I am, okay.
Will we get a date on February? I mean. We'll have, we'll have region's data as far as students that have passed. But not. Comparison with the region.
Mostly under PBA David.
Right. But I'll have the, how many students were still. I guess we're, how many students need to get.
Or how many have gotten improved?
Continually improved. So I want to see those graphs continue to improve.
Yeah.
Let's see those next.
Like that. Anything else? Anyone? Yeah, how do we make your kids smarter?
What I kind of say is, I mean, again, the algebra, the algebra test is a graduation requirement.
So right.
We have been meeting that requirement and it might take some kids longer than others, but we continually pursue it and push it and teach it, reteach it and get them through.
Yeah. If it was Jordan and she took algebra, she took the algebra regents like five times because she kept wanting to do it better. So just to try to get that advanced distinction for your diploma, you know? Even if you're smart, I'm still trying to be smarter, right? We make our kids smarter.
There you go.
Okay.
Seven years.
Seven years, that's it? Every seven years.
You know, I mean, seven years of.
I know, I know. I get it. Okay. Anyone else? Any comments? All right, thank you everybody for presenting.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to our communications. Do we have anybody phone title six besides Karen?
See, buddy. Um, no, we're still meeting a style six meeting. We had a meeting last week and we talked about upcoming things, planning for next year's budget. Right, we kind of talked about that for a few minutes. It seems odd the fact that all in November, that's the cycle. So we're already thinking about what we can do for next year. Getting creative and also staying within the bounds of the title six grant. Yeah, that's, that's kind of it, brainstorming and coming up with ideas of what we can do to help further our kids' education. And make their kids smarter.
Yeah, do we have any other public communication? Can you turn around to central office message?
We think we have a person that wanted to talk, but I love the one who's going to talk tomorrow. I think I said a good question.
Do you want to? Callum Quigley from the Summit Press said some questions regarding the recent letter regarding Native American mascots and wanted to look for some comments. So I'll follow up with them tomorrow.
Okay. And if you want to start with Mrs. Jean, would we?
Yeah, I have nothing to share right now, just mostly have the background and we're like, have a new solid. Thank you.
Karen?
Ditto.
Ditto. Love that. Okay.
Wow.
Wow. I know, right? That's what everybody gets to say, ditto. Let's start with Slob. You have a message tonight, Slob?
Ditto. I just appreciate what you're doing. This is, this is the case. It's sort of hard for me to understand all of that. So keep up the good work, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, let's spend some time with your family.
Dad?
Kind of what Sam seems to be, just wish everybody some time off and have a Thanksgiving and all that good stuff.
Brad?
Happy Thanksgiving, have a safe holiday.
Yeah.
You don't know.
That's it for me too. I just want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your families and relax. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I prepared about thirty-five items here that I wanted to go over. So. No, just, as I was thanking our staff, thanking everybody, we're putting in so much work to make the wheels go around around here. Everything we're doing to help our kids improve their education, it can't be set enough. Thank you guys for everything you do, you know? We're coming into a great, as Dale said, we'll be coming back strong and finish, finish this calendar year. That's really all I got.
I just wanted to thank you guys.
Oh, wait, wait.
Sorry, do that.
Can I take Sue's turn?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, no.
Up in Buffalo.
Well, yeah.
Down here.
It's a bit up there.
Yeah. I just wanted to thank the presenters tonight. Even though some of the data isn't what we want it to be, we still need to know where we are if we want to improve. And there's no sense trying to hide behind it and trying to make it look better than what it is. So I appreciate that you're presenting us what it is. I appreciate that you're presenting us what it is and that we have a plan in place to make our kids smarter, uh, which I think should be our new theme on how we make our kids smarter, perhaps. Um, but I know it takes a lot of hard work and effort to come up with the data and to present it and to have all the different meetings that you do to keep our kids on track. So it is very much appreciated. And again, I'm gonna say ditto on Thanksgiving. I hope everybody has a great holiday because it is time that you should be spending with your family and you know, some of my family's here and sometimes you don't want to spend time with them, but you have to.
That was a chat, right?
He's my favorite. Okay. So we'll turn it over to Dr. Vila.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of quick notes. I had the opportunity today to thank members of the Sons of the American Legion who donated thirty complete Thanksgiving dinners to area families in need. Um, this was done in collaboration with school district social workers and some of our other support staff. So thank you to those folks um, that have really provided an opportunity for others to have a Thanksgiving that um, will, will be special. Uh, I also had the chance today to cheer on students and adults who participated in the first annual. And that's not sure it's actually annual, but it will be now since then I've said it officially. Um, the first annual Salamaka Turkey Truck. Um, students at Salamaka Intermediate completed a run around the campus and through Veterans Park. So I wanted to give a special thank you to Keith Jones, our phys ed teacher, wrestling coach. How this ties in, our cross-country coach who um, organized the event. A lot of folks were involved with it, but I think he was uh, pretty much the emphasis behind it. He's really been doing a lot to get students and adults out running. So it was great. We cheered them on pretty much all morning. So that was terrific. And I also just wanted to continue the uh, trend here of wishing our communities, uh, the warrior community a peaceful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second, motion by Dale, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor, I opposed, abstain, motion carries. Item nine, we have no old business. We moved item ten, new business, which is our budget development calendar. So we need a motion to approve the budget development calendar. Please note that we will need a, a meeting on April eighteenth. Right, Karen?
Yes, unless I can get it all done ahead of time and. They're not guaranteeing.
No guarantee.
Right.
So we need a motion to approve the budget development calendar.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Brad, second by Carrie. Is there any questions? All in favor, I opposed, abstain, motion carries. Item B is to amend our last chance agreement. So we need a motion to approve um, the amended, that's basically.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor, I opposed, abstain, motion carries. Item eleven is our personnel consent agenda. So, item B, we need to approve your personnel consent agenda number one.
Motion.
Motion by Dale, second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I, I.
I oppose, abstain, motion carries. Item two, or item C is our personal consent agenda number two. So we need a motion to approve our personal consent agenda number two.
Motion.
Motion by Ted, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I, I.
Opposed, I will abstain, motion carries. Item three, so personal action number, item E, personal action number three. We need a motion to approve our personnel consent agenda, item three. Do we need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Flip.
Second.
Second by Ted. All in favor?
I, I.
I will uh, say yes. Opposed. Abstain. Motion carried. Item G is our introduction of our newly appointed staff.
Uh, we do have several new uh, warriors test tonight, but I don't see any that are here nor do I see any online. So we will, our, extend our welcome when we see that.
Okay. Item twelve is our board information and reports. So we have a voluntary transfer of Ross Stokes from School Monitor at the Bus Garage, Prospect to School Monitor and Prospect Elementary or upcoming events. Which we have on December eighth, we have our personnel and instruction training meeting at A and M at West Gate, December eighth through the tenth. Everybody go up to support the Salamaka Drama Club production of Owl. Uh, December thirteenth is our next Board of Education meeting. Also, December thirteenth, we have our high school band concert. December fourteenth is Indigenous Education Committee meeting right here at the LGI. And December fifteenth, we also have a Seneca Intermediate School Band Concert. So everybody get out and support everyone, please. It's always good to see the kids uh, in whatever way that they're performing. So with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie. Second by, who was that, Brad? All in favor?
I.
I oppose, abstain, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Have a great Thanksgiving.